All right, good evening. I call this meeting to order. It's the regular city council meeting of January 27, 2020. Time is 7:35. Will the clerk please take roll call?
Councilman Bliss?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Councilor Greifstein?
Here.
Councilor Rorback?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Mayor Hartwell?
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation to be led by Councilor Rorback and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
May we break down barriers, widen horizons, and be less judgmental. May we see the larger picture and kinder conclusion. May we love and let live, embrace and forgive, sustain and care. May we reach out to our better selves that we may love more and hate less, care more and reject less, that bound together by understanding we may sustain each other through trial and tribulation, through joy and happiness, and may we be joined together with wisdom, discernment, and thoughtful communication.
Thank you.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Approval of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move a new D-2, or to add a D-2 to the agenda, which would be the KEIP agreement involving the city and the deputy city manager police chief. I'd move to add that to the agenda.
Under reports, D-2?
D-2, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rorback?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to add an item, D-2, under reports. Is there discussion?
We started, see, it's marked twice. You already did roll call.
Any discussion on to add this item to the agenda? All right, let's vote to add. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion to add is approved. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, we can continue on. We have a presentation tonight to celebrate the Asian Lunar New Year, which was this last week on January 25. City manager, do you have a report, or would you like to read?
I can read that. So, city council is recognizing the Lunar New Year, which was January the 25th, whereas January the 25th of 2020 is the Lunar New Year, and whereas the Lunar New Year is celebrated by Chinese, Koreans, Vietnamese, and other Asian ethnic groups, and whereas the Lunar New Year is considered to be a significant holiday by many in the Asian community as a centuries-old tradition ushering in harmony and goodwill in this year of the rat, and whereas in terms of the yin and yang, the rat is the yang and represents the beginning of a new day, a sign of wealth and surplus, and whereas on behalf of all of the city of Madison Heights Asian community residents and business owners, we wish you happiness and prosperity in the new year. And now therefore, the city of Madison Heights City Council does hereby recognize January the 25th, 2020, as the Lunar New Year and wishes everyone a happy new year.
Thank you for reading that. I'm trying to think some of my Asian language skills. So, Shin Yan Kwai La is the Mandarin way to say happy new year. Gon Chi Fan Tai, I think, is the Taiwanese way, and then Chuk Meng Nam Moi is the Vietnamese way. So, happy new year, everyone. We have no public hearings tonight, but we do have meeting open to the public. So, this is the opportunity right now, if anyone would like to address city council on any subject, this is the time. If you'd be so kind, please come to the center of the room. Good evening, sir. Welcome to City Hall.
No, I have brain injury, so speak hard. But I have a pacemaker, so it's designed to help me speak. So, if I get words messed up, it's not keeping up. Okay. I want to talk about fake documents affecting my life here, Madison Heights. Me lose my home in December because of disabled. Former guardian slash landlord used my disabilities to take my home and like up to $20,000. Reason why I bring your attention here is because Valentine's Day, 2008, there was an accident, and Madison Heights Police come accident, and I'm not able to speak due to accident. So, for some reason, the police officers who came, they wrote fake report. I guess because I wasn't available to speak, they chose to just put something in report. That's affected my life greatly, and that's information come forward now prove that poor fake. That's one fake document. About 10 years ago, a judge, he had white supremacists attack me when he was in Hiddle Park. They beat me with bats and spilled me, simply because they didn't want black in the neighborhood. They were prosecuted, but he let them go, no punishment, no probation, or nothing. During my victim impact statement, I was upset. He didn't like some I say, so he sentenced me 30-day jail. So, you keep score, white supremacists beat me with bats, no punishment. I said something he don't like during victim impact statement, I go jail. Now, ACU sue him, he fight. But then you think it would get better? About 10 months later, he accused me, threatened murder him, threatening to murder him and his whole family. I had nothing to do with it, but he not accept denial because he received some kind of fake document. There was a posing threat for me, so they had me snatch out my home, they had me take FBI polygraph, they had me fingerprints, DNA, the whole works. Turned out I had nothing to do with it. So, just recently, I lost my home because of his court. He allowed landlord repeatedly commit crime against me, and I know who he was when he was residing over my case. It wasn't until he said something on like the third hearing, we triggered memory, because I have bad vision, so I can't receive well. He allowed this former guardian to use fake documents to take my home and take my money. When I finally realized who he was, I asked him, you know, because I couldn't speak at the time, but now I can, but I asked him to pay work. Because we have such a toxic history, he should not have been involved in none of my cases. He ignore. Now, Chief Judge, he's looking at my case right now, but problem I have here is that if you're going to accept in Madison Heights, when you see clearly there's a documentation is not real or accurate, if you're going to allow that to exist and not have any accountability, then especially people like me who are disabled, we have no protection. And my case with the cops, we filed FOIA, and then we asked why report was fake. They say if they release that, it will harm public. I find that to be ironic, because the fake report harmed me severely. And excuse me, I don't know time, so tell me what time. I don't want to run off. I just want to make sure that people out there who are here who understand accountability is necessary in government, because if you have no accountability, then people get harmed. So, I've been living in hotel 30 days, but I started on Sunday, I'll be living my car all home and shelter is full. But this is the point I want to make down, let others speak. I did not get in this position because I did something wrong. I'm in this position simply because of disabled. And no one should allow people who are disabled to become victims and not do nothing, because just like before my accident, I have no disabilities. You can leave out of here today, and you can get hit, and your whole life can change like mine did because of a disabled driver for taxi. So, I just want two people to understand, if you don't hold accountability, there's no way to protect people, especially vulnerable adults. So, and I know I'm probably all my time, so I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, sorry. I don't want to, I don't want to take that time. But I just want it just to be addressed, because the most vulnerable of our society, disabled, mentally ill, there seems to be an abandonment of protecting us. And I speak for all disabled people, especially now since I have voice. Two years I not have voice, I give voice back. Like three weeks ago, I just want you to look into my matters, like Chief Judge doing now, and have accountability, because if you don't, and people depend on you, we have no buffer. So, I just ask you, as I speak for people who are disabled, disabilities, please look into my matters. Most of you already know it. I asked to speak to Chief, he not want. I asked to speak to city attorney, he not want. No one listen, so I have come here. I hope come here will get people to at least acknowledge and hold the ones who have caused me to be in this situation.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting is open to the public. Would anyone else like to address city council? Okay, we can continue on. Under Communications, item C1, is a resignation from Mr. Said from the Library Advisory Board and the Multicultural Relations Advisory Board. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, member of the Library Advisory Board and Multicultural Relations Advisory Board, Asil Asid, has submitted her resignation from these boards. Staff recommends that council accept this resignation and declare both of these seats vacant.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I move to accept the resignation of Ms. Asid from the Library Advisory Board, Multicultural Relations Board, declare the seats vacant, and issue the appropriate resolution of thanks.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Clark?
I support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Mr. Said, declare his seats vacant, and issue the appropriate thanks. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have reports. There are two tonight. The first is D1, it's from the Human Resources Director. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, city council is requested to approve a retiree healthcare savings program amendment to provide for the department heads' union participation in the voluntary retiree healthcare opt-out program as provided for in the 2018 to 2021 collective bargaining agreement, and to authorize Finance Director Kunitz to sign the amendment on behalf of the city. Funds to cover the lump sum payment will be included in June budget amendments.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve the MERS/HCSP participation agreement and authorize Finance Director to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Rorback?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the MERS/HCSP agreement amendment and authorize the city's Finance Director to sign. Is there discussion? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. We have another report, which was added earlier. It'll be item D2. It's the employment agreement. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report or any comments?
Just city council is being requested to approve this KEIP agreement for the deputy city manager police chief Haynes and the city.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the council approve the recommended KEIP agreement between the city of Madison Heights and the deputy city manager slash police chief Cory Haynes.
Thank you.
And authorize, I'm sorry, I lost it. The mayor or just the?
The mayor and the city clerk to sign.
Mayor and the city clerk to sign on behalf of the community people. There you are.
Thank you. Well stated. Is there support?
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the KEIP between the city Madison Heights and the deputy city manager slash chief of police Cory Haynes, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion? If no discussion, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next on our agenda are bid awards or purchases. There are three for consideration. The first is F1 regarding police vehicle replacement. Mrs. Marsh?
City council is requested to approve the purchase of a 2020 Chevy Equinox from Todd Wenzel's Chevrolet through the Macomb County Cooperative Purchasing Program in the amount of $24,601. This is a scheduled vehicle replacement, and funds are budgeted and available for this purchase.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council approve the recommended purchase of the 2020 Chevy Equinox. According to the specifications, it is budgeted and funds are available.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Clark?
I support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommended purchase of the 2020 Chevy Equinox under the recommended terms. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next bid award purchase is item F2. It's similar, it's another police vehicle replacement. Mrs. Marsh?
City council is requested to approve the purchase of one 2020 police utility interceptor to replace vehicle 117, which was deemed a total loss by the city's insurance carrier last year. The vehicle will be purchased through the Macomb County Cooperative Purchasing Program from Signature Ford at the unit cost of $36,274. Funds are available for this purchase through the insurance replacement coverage.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Your honor?
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
I move that we approve the purchase of a 2020 police utility interceptor vehicle, which is a replacement for vehicle number 117, and from Signature Ford through the Macomb County Cooperative Purchasing Program for the unit cost of $36,274, which is available for purchase through the insurance replacement coverage.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Rorback?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the purchase from Signature Ford of a 2020 police interceptor utility vehicle, which would replace vehicle number 117 in the amount of $36,274. Is there discussion? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Agenda item F3 is regarding the police in-car mobile data computers. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, the police department's patrol vehicles are all equipped with a mobile data computers that allow the officers to run license plates, persons, and vehicles through the law enforcement information network and the secretary of state. These computers also receive dispatch data for all of the police runs, and the officers write reports and update incidents from these computers. The computers or in the vehicles were originally unpurchased in 2012 to 2013, and their warranty is expired in 2018. The department is experiencing problems with several of the in-car computers, and the repair work is costly without warranty coverage. Staff and I respectfully request that council approve the purchase of replacement mobile data computers through a bid obtained through the Oakland County Clemus for Dell Computers, which is the only supplier approved by Oakland County. The total cost for this replacement, including installation, is $51,798. Funds have been budgeted and are available for the purchase from federal drug forfeiture funds.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council approve the purchase of the recommended in-car mobile data computers. Total cost is $51,798. The funds are budgeted and will be coming through the federal drug forfeiture fund.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your honor?
Mrs. Greifstein?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommended purchase of police in-car mobile data computers in the amount of $51,798. Is there discussion from council? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. I'm not ready to make any mayor's appointments, but I know the clock is ticking. Are there any nominations from city council members for boards and commissions?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
Just clarification, we were going to do these all in one fell swoop. Is that the first meeting in February, or are we taking it after the expiration in March?
I'm in the process, your honor, I'm in the process of reaching out to all the current seat holders to see if they would like to ask for their seats to be renewed, and then once I have a response from them, I'll be putting a report together for you. So, Michael is February 28, unless I, or the last meeting in February, unless I have to, don't get a positive response, and I need to keep reaching out.
Okay, so is there any action? Do you need a motion to receive and file this tonight, or is this just awareness for the public?
The applicants that are before you tonight are ones to fill current vacancies, not the ones for renewals. So, if the council chooses to act on those, they can. They do not have to.
Okay, well, your honor, I support doing these all in one fell swoop, though I will take the opportunity to remind anybody out there in TV land or in the audience today that if you're interested in serving, our boards are incredibly active. They are some of the most active in the tri-county area. They do some incredibly great things. They just recently were a part of that small grant program where we gave all of the quality of life boards the ability to apply to spend money based on some budgeted savings. And so, they're very active. Planning Commission right now is redoing the master plan. We see so many boards have impact in our city, and so if there's something that you'd like to apply for, that you have a passion in, that you have private sector experience in, we've got openings pretty much across the gamut. And even if we don't have an opening in that board, they do become available, so put yourself in the queue for when they do become available.
All right, there's no motion in any of that, right? That was just?
No motion.
Okay. All right, there's no action, we can continue on. We have several sets of minutes to consider adoption. What's the wish of council regarding the special minutes from 12:30 19?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to approve as printed the special city council meeting minutes of 12:30 19. Oh, I wasn't there, so it just occurred to me, maybe I should let somebody else do that. I'm just so used to being helpful, sir.
Our motion, I'll recognize Mr. Bliss for a motion.
Yes, your honor, I will move that we adopt the minutes of the special council meeting of December 30, 2019, as printed.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Rorback?
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt as printed the minutes of the special meeting of 12:30 19. Is there discussion? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What's the wish of council regarding the regular meeting from 113 20?
Mr. Mayor? I was there for that one, so I would move to approve the regular meeting minutes of 113 20.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Is there support?
Your honor?
Who is that? Ms. Greifstein? Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt as printed the minutes from the regular meeting of 113 20. What's, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. And is that date right?
Yeah, that was the?
The special minutes of 115.
That was the budgets?
Yeah.
Oh, the budget meeting, of course. What's the wish of council regarding the special meeting on 115?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett?
I move to approve the special meeting minutes of 115?
20.
20.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Clark?
I'll support.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt as printed the minutes from the special meeting of 115 20. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. I don't believe there's any business remaining before city council, so before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments. I'd like to, Mr. Corbett?
I wanted to tonight just acknowledge the passing of a gentleman. To the best of my knowledge, Bill Wren never served on a city council commission or committee or anything. He was just simply one of the many people who helped build this community years ago. He and his wife raised, I believe it was seven children, over on Shackett, and they were active in the community. Whenever the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts, and Lord knows he was active with them for many years, needed something, he was there. He served as the milkman back, this is the 50s, early 60s, and then went on to other work. His children are now, years later, spread across the country, productive, wonderful men and women, genuine testament to him and his wife. So, I would like to acknowledge his passing and ask that maybe a condolence resolution on behalf of the community be prepared and sent to his widow, along with our deepest sympathy and respect for his contribution to the city in his way and in his neighborhood. Just a reminder that we will be still having office hours, 1, 2, 3 on Fridays. I don't want to disappoint Mr. Bliss, I never miss that. But other than that, that's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, your honor. Very similar to Councilman Corbett's discussion, I'd like to highlight the people who helped to build this city. We're deep in strategic planning right now, and we've got a lot of major issues that we're navigating that we as a council are deciding on that could affect what the city looks like 50 years from now. And so, a lot of times, and I've told this, frankly, I've been caught by several members of this council, before a meeting, I will sometimes go into the back and look at that wall. The city wasn't built by accident. We're here because of a long legacy of volunteers and public officials who have paved the way for us. Our position isn't just ours, we share it with them, we stand on the shoulders of giants. Now, they weren't infallible, they were human, they made mistakes. There's not a single elected official that doesn't have at least one, if not way more than that, decision that they would take back. And I'm sure it's no different for anybody on that wall, but they made our city, and in some cases are still kind of unsung heroes. Now, that's kind of a weird statement for me to make, I'm not on the historical committee, I actually can't be. I abstain from that because my dad was serving on that prior to me sitting on council, so I can't, I can't even vote to reappoint him. But as a third-generation resident, those pictures on the back of the wall aren't just names to me. And the impact that they've had on our city, I think frankly, it's just the example of what the position is that we all hold, the legacy of ethical and inspirational public service that we all strive to maintain. And so, aside from the resolutions that we pass, and there are some, you know, trees that have been named, I think we need to do a little bit more than that. It's my hope that decades from now, people will look at pictures on the wall of us and aspire to live. And so, aside from the resolutions that we pass, and there are some, you know, trees that have been named, I think we need to do a little bit more than that. It's my hope that decades from now, people will look at pictures on the wall of us and aspire to live up to the things that we do. And to that end, I want to make it easy for people to see these faces, other than just in the back of a room that nobody looks at. I'd love to have a formal process that I hope staff can look into, where we can name more buildings, parks, pavilions, conference rooms, after the people who built this city. They did more to give us the opportunity to make the decisions that we're making on a daily basis than I think we ever acknowledge. And I know it's busy, we've got strategic planning, and we've got a lot going on, but I'd love us to have a process where at least once a year, we look to that wall and the people that aren't even on there, and we identify a couple people to bring their families in, bring them in if we can, and issue not just a congratulatory resolution thanking them for their service, but I'd love to name something after them in the city to show the physical impression that they made on the city, have a place that people can go. And eventually, the name just becomes a name, like Huffman Park. It becomes the name of the park, but you can forever remember why it was named that way. And so, I just want a formal process on that. I've talked for too long, so I'll leave that to staff to dig into what that process is. But I want a formal process where council can decide what potential naming opportunities there are, and who on that wall, or even off of that wall, should we be recognizing. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rorback?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize one of my own, my fellow council members, Mayor Pro Tem Grafstein. I am really appreciative of your time in the last several months of working endlessly to represent us in so many ways, and I really appreciate that. I want to recognize you publicly for that. As many of you know, the electorplating services issue is being, working on, there's a cleanup situation going on, the, there's a town hall. I want to make sure everybody knows that the town hall is happening on February 3rd at 5:30 PM. The doors open at 5:30 PM at Madison High School. I encourage everyone, anyone who is interested and wants to participate in that conversation, get answers, and hear from the people who are doing the cleanup, please come. This is, we want you to be there. We want you to be, participate in this conversation. In addition, I echo what Councilman Bliss said a moment ago, that our boards and commissions are active and contribute so much. In just the last couple of weeks, I've been in a multicultural, multicultural board, our environmental citizens committee board, crime commission, and parks and rec. And at every one of those, something amazing has happened. There's been one person or more that has come out and said, hey, I want to do something special in this city, and we've been able to work together to find ways to make that happen. And I just want to encourage anyone, even if you do not sit on a board for this city, all board meetings are open to the public, and you do not have to sit on the board to come and contribute and to offer up suggestions and ideas. And I encourage everyone here in this audience, all six of you, and everyone who's watching on TV or on YouTube in a few weeks, I would just want to encourage everybody to come out to every board meeting. They're all posted on the website, the advance of those meetings, and we have an amazing amount of energy that's going on in the city, and we can, we can do great things together. And I just encourage everybody to come, participate, and help us, help us be the city that we want to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Gachowski?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager, Ms. Marsh?
Well, I don't want to be repetitive, so I'll only say one thing. Happy birthday, Cheryl. Thank you.
Birthday clerk, Ms. Ratlin?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple things tonight. The first thing was, I'm very sad to hear about Bill Wren. He was an election worker as well. When I first started here, a summer, an August election came about, and usually we have help from the students, but they're out of school in the summer, so it's hard to get people. And I was a new clerk, so some workers were not sure whether they wanted to come back. And I found their names on old applications, and I called them, and I said, hey, do you want to work the election? And he said, well, we're not very good on computers. I said, that's okay, we'll give you another job. And he came, he worked for us, and oh my gosh, what a great sense of humor that man has. He was just a real great help to us. He moved out of the city a couple, about a year or so ago. So, he didn't work for us anymore, but we will surely miss him and his contribution. I just wanted to remind everybody, for this election on March 10th, this is a presidential primary, you have to choose what ballot you want to receive, whether you're voting absentee or whether you're voting in the precinct. The choices are, you can receive a Republican ballot, a Democratic ballot, or a ballot with just the proposal only, so, and that's for everybody. If you are on our permanent absentee list, you should have gotten your absentee application already in the mail. If you have a knock on it, please call our office, we can send you another, or if you want to be, sign up for that list, or you just want to get absentee ballot for this election, please call us, 248-583-0826. And the last thing I wanted to say is that the state of Michigan, for 2000, for this election year, or for this election year on, has changed our materials that we're sending the absentee ballots out in. So, instead of getting the regular manila envelope that you normally get your ballot in, you're going to be receiving this white and blue envelope. It does say ballot on the side here, so, but I don't want anybody to miss, receive this and think that it's junk mail. It is your ballot, so just be on the lookout for this in the mail. Thank you.
Can we post that at the front of our website?
Yes, and we're doing a...
Okay, I'm sorry.
We're doing a video on it, too.
Great, great, great. Councilor Grafstein, or Mayor Pro Tem Grafstein? Old habit.
Two years of it there, Mayor. On Thursday, four days ago, five days ago, Thursday, January 23rd, I found out that five years ago, without my knowledge or consent, my name and address were put on a list of potential claimants for the potential lawsuit. I am making this statement today because I want to be as transparent as possible and fully disclose everything I know as soon as I can. I am not suing the city. I was, without my knowledge or consent, along with 2,000 other households in the city, put on a list of potential claimants for a potential lawsuit that over five years later has still not been certified by lawyers who have not contacted me in the last five years, who do not have my permission to sue me, on my behalf, who acknowledge they are not my lawyers, and have stated that I am not a party to the lawsuit, but refuse to remove me from the list. Does anybody want me to explain that further? I will. In 2014, my basement was one of thousands that was damaged by the flood. In the months that followed, I received a lot of mail and paperwork, much of it unsolicited. The city sent us a letter asking if we wanted to file a claim for damages, so we, along with about 2,000 others in the city, filled out paperwork for that. Later in the year, we received a letter of claim denial from the city attorney, and we moved on. The city sent us something, and we moved on. In the last five years, there were no other communications to us regarding the flood. The claim, or any lawsuit, or litigation, I never contacted anyone, or consented to be part of a lawsuit, a potential lawsuit, further claim, or anything. We were done. I spent most of Thursday talking with lawyers, trying to find out how to remove myself from the list, and find out how I was put on it without my authorization or knowledge. Does anyone want to hear how that happened? How they took my name, my address, without my consent, and put me on the list? Apparently, two of the unsolicited letters we received in 2014 were asking if I wanted to sue the city. I didn't, so I didn't respond. I found out that if I had responded, I would have received regular updates and known I was on the list, but I didn't want to sue the city. I did not want to sue the city. So, it was fine that the claim was denied, and so I didn't respond and thought it was over. I can share with you what I have found out over the last few days, during which time I've had very little sleep. I am still trying to figure out how to remove myself from being on the potential claimant list, and I'm still abstaining from any votes regarding this case, but I'm making this statement today, today, because I want to be as transparent as soon as possible. It has been five years since the flood, and I don't know how long it's going to be until this is resolved. Everyone keeps talking about Hinckley? That's still ongoing. 20 years later, still ongoing. This case isn't certified, which I think means there may not actually be a case, but I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not sure. I just want to make sure that I stay here, because at some point, it was mentioned, and it might be relevant, and I want to disclose everything as soon as I found out, or as soon as I do find out, and it's reasonable possible. I will continue to seek answers to try and have myself removed from the potential claimant list, but I will also continue to recuse myself from any executive sections or votes that have to do with this case. I take my role on council seriously, and will continue to update both council and our residents if there is any news with this. The city sent us a letter asking if we wanted to file a claim for damages, so we, along with about 20% of the city, filled out paperwork for that. Later in the year, we received a letter of claim of denial from the city attorney and moved on. With seven members on council, it is statistically expected that one or two of us would have filed a claim. If anyone has any concerns about how I feel about this city, my loyalty to council, to the residents, to the city, I strongly suggest you review my record, it will speak for itself. I was contacted by the media last week, asking why I recused myself from the meeting and why I'm abstaining for the vote. I did that because I submitted this claim, I forgot about it, because it's been five years, and there's been nothing. And then it came up that we were having this meeting, and I was like, oh, we're having a meeting about something that I didn't think still existed. I should probably not go to that meeting, and I should probably find out. And that was my plan. That was early in December. Unfortunately, over the last month, I haven't been thinking about finding out about this claim. I've been dealing with a few other things. And now, this has come up again, because the media's contacting me. They seem to think there's a story here. The story would be that I had to contact the city lawyer to find out who's even doing the lawsuit, because I don't know who's doing the lawsuit. I do now, but I didn't know. The last thing that I got that was in my basement file, the last thing that I received is this. It's dated October 2014, and it said, your claim is denied. I received this because I filled out a form. The form I filled out would be this form, I guess, also in the file. This was from the city. I have nothing secret. I did not disclose something, but because I can't disclose something, I don't know. I am this close to the breaking point, I might have actually met it tonight, because while I'm trying to have my normal life and deal with other things, this has been taking up my time. I don't know how much sleep I've received over the last few days, but I want to be on record that I found out about this on Thursday. Today is Monday, and this is when I'm disclosing it, not waiting until the next closed session. I'm not waiting until two weeks from now, when the minutes from the closed session I didn't attend need to be approved. I'm telling you now, because this was the first time I could do it. In other news, because that actually hasn't been the whole thing I've been doing. I've actually been doing a lot of other things for the city. Yesterday, Ms. Rorback and I, we hosted an adoptive burn. That was pretty cool. We had about six people who came, and we talked about different ideas that we had in the city on what we could do for the different areas. I think everyone who came walked away with a job to do. So, I was very happy with that. We could go to, no, on Monday, on Tuesday last week, I attended coffee with your congressman, with Congressman Levin in Ferndale, and one of the many items that we discussed was the EPS site. City's in ongoing litigation with the EPS owner, and I just want everyone to know that Congressman Levin was instrumental in ensuring the testimony of the EPA at the trial. And then on Friday, Councilwoman Clark and I attended our fifth EPS update at the Eagle offices in Warren. And later on, I had the opportunity to spend some one-on-one time with Governor Whitmer, and we talked about the EPS site. And if she didn't know before our talk, she knows now that we are looking for support in our efforts to completely and permanently clean up the site. She talked about reinstating polluters' pay principle, and I suggested procedural administrative communication changes with an Eagle that may help decrease the likelihood of something like this happening again. And I also let her know what an amazing job Tracy Kaskamety of Eagle has been doing this last month. From updating this weekly to testifying before the appropriations committee, she has patiently answered our questions and acknowledged our frustrations. She's dedicated to getting us through this and making sure that Madison Heights is not I'm sorry for my outburst. I'm extremely stressed. I'm extremely frustrated, and it probably wasn't appropriate, but I think if I'd started crying, I wouldn't have been able to finish. So, thank you for sitting through this. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Grafstein. Ms. Clark?
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Grafstein. I missed the last city council meeting. I was hospitalized for three days for a medical emergency, so I wasn't able to make it, but I did watch live. Had I been here that day, my closing comments would have been to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Rosalind Grafstein for her conduct in being the literal human shield for the city of Madison Heights at our biggest crisis that has ever happened in the city. While the mayor was on vacation, a planned vacation, she was named Mayor Pro Tem and thrown into the deep end instantly, and she handled it like a frickin' professional. And I could not be more proud of not only how she is handled speaking with state leaders and gathering information from the EPA and Eagle, but how she's been able to communicate it with the residents online. I can tell you that she's been communicating with thousands of residents online every single week, getting questions from them, delivering them to the authorities that are helping with the cleanup, and making sure that all of their press releases are framed to answer the community's questions. And I can tell you that Mayor Pro Tem Rosalind Grafstein is the number-one reason this room is not filled with people who have torches and pitchforks, because they feel like they are getting the information that they need. Because of this, we have a public forum where the public is going to come and listen to presentations from all of the authorities, listen to information from different politicians, get questions answered from members of our city, and be able to ask questions on their own. She is the reason for that. Now, to give you a little bit of context as to why Rosalind is so upset, our Mayor Pro Tem is so upset. On Wednesday, I was contacted by the mayor. He told me that there was a disciplinary issue involving whether or not this court case was going to affect whether or not she could be Mayor Pro Tem. He said that, to him and a couple other members of city council, it seemed like maybe her loyalty was not to the city because she was a part of a lawsuit that she doesn't even know if she's a part of and didn't have anything to be a part of, and we're looking for it as a reason to unseat her as Pro Tem, to have her resign. I was told that if she was going to be asked to resign, and if she didn't, that the newspapers would be contacted, and that that story would go loose. What I didn't know was the newspapers had already been contacted at the point that I was contacted by the mayor. I could not believe this information came to me. I couldn't believe it came from the mayor, and I couldn't believe that any one member on this city council could sit back after watching what she did with this crisis and say, I think her loyalty to the city is just not there. And what is it saying, that if you're suing the city for the flood that happened, which thousands of people are involved in, by saying that if you're a member of that lawsuit, that you're loyal to the city, that your loyalty to the city is off, does that say that all those thousands of people's loyalty is off, too? You have my support, Rosalind. This is an embarrassing distraction. It is very sad that you were intimidated to this point where you had to come here tonight and get this upset, but it's important that everyone here and everyone watching knows why she's upset. This is embarrassing, that she has to be here to defend herself on this. Whether or not she's part of the lawsuit where she lost over $30,000 in damage to a basement that flooded or not, has no bearing on whether or not she is a great Pro Tem. As far as I know, our city has never had to have a Pro Tem, Pro Tem, in the way that But this is the very first time that we've ever had to deal with this crisis, and holy cow, Rosalind, you did an amazing job.
I haven't slept in a month.
I know you haven't, and I can't imagine that it hasn't been easier by having members of council come to you and make you feel like you had to come and do this today. It's a shame, and I can't even believe it, because I legitimately think that every member on this council is doing great things for the city. And it seems like a very fragile masculine thing to do, to bring a woman to this point on city council, particularly when we're all known so very well for working together and how we conduct ourselves on city council. I'm sorry you had to go through that, I'm sorry that you had to read this statement today. You're the best Protem that I've ever met, I think you're doing great, and you have my support moving forward, regardless of what happens through this. I hope the lawyers find that there is nothing involving this that could prevent you from being Protem, I think you're doing great. On top of that, there are a couple other things going on in the city. Lampier Band Boosters is this Wednesday at 4:00 PM. The Arts Board is also meeting Thursday at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. A lot of great things going on with the Arts Board, if you want to get involved and volunteer, please come. There is Puzzle Day at the Madison Heights Public Library, and that is on Wednesday at 9:00 AM. And we also, the Madison Heights Public Library is doing a bookmark contest, so if you or your children want to get involved in that, I think that that is a great, a great activity you can get involved with. I also suggest, if you're watching this and you know what a great job Rosalind's been doing, that you reach out and give her some support tonight, because she's hurting, and she shouldn't have to. That's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Clark. Mr. Soltis?
Well, I'm, I'm sure what to say, I was gonna be a little heavy-handed with, but I feel like I should be more lighthearted, I mean, I slept pretty well, but I want to go over historically, I think, because we have to look, I mean, I like sometimes to look in the big picture, we're not just cities, we're part of humanity. Today's the anniversary, unfortunately, January 27th, 1945, when Auschwitz was 75th anniversary, when the liberation, when the soldiers came in and found statistically 7,000 starving prisoners alive. The German SS systematically killed 960,000 Jews, 74,000 Poles, 20,000 Romanians, 15,000 Soviet prisoners of war, and 10 other thousand nationalities. That's very tragic, just so people at home know that this is the anniversary, the 75th anniversary. Also, Chief, if you could look into that gentleman's complaints or issues, we'd appreciate that, please. And can I get a new microphone, phone, because this is, this is all beat off, I'm the only one, I look around, did I got one? So, no, that's okay, thank you.
Your Honor, sorry, I just want to comment on something Mr. Soltis said. Thank you for remembering that it's Holocaust, remember this day today, which I do know, because I'm Jewish. As far as I know, I did not have family at Auschwitz, but I did have family that died in a concentration camp, so thank you for acknowledging that, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Graffstein, you're welcome to deliver messages in any manner, and we are mature enough that if there's any emotion in your tone, that we can go straight to the heart of your message. And if I ever speak, it's on behalf of members of council, and, you know, myself, and I think I could speak for council, is you are a remarkable Mayor Protem, and you are such a fine servant to our city and our people. And that was demonstrated in the last month of work, when I left the country for a religious reason, you stepped right in, and we need you. You are your best when you are on duty, so it's imperative that you do what you can to get back to work on all issues. We need you at every meeting, and you should not abstain from meetings, so do what you can to get back to work, because that's when you shine. You're a remarkable human being, a remarkable professional, and you have been an effective Mayor Protem that represents council and the people of Madison Heights. Do what you need to do, and we'll get back to work. I thank members of city council for their comments tonight, and thank you for staff for preparing the agenda. We'll adjourn this meeting, we'll see you next time.